All right, welcome staff to the city council meeting. Thank you for attending tonight. Today is the regular city council meeting for June the 3rd? Is that correct? June 2nd, 3rd? I'm looking for it. 3rd, okay. Can I have a report from closed session, Mr. Spandario?
Thank you, Mayor. Council convening in closed session. There's no reportable action.
All right, well now I'll call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone would please join us for a silent prayer and followed by the flag salute.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Saturday, June 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Anything from council? All right, we need to move the item G2, presentations, the C Street Beautification Committee. We're going to move that to a future meeting. Is that correct, Tina?
Correct.
All right, nothing else from council, then we will move on to our only presentation of this evening, which is the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Report.
All right, well, thank you very much for the invitation to come out and talk a little bit about mosquito control we do in your particular area. My name is Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager. We cover Sacramento and Yolo County. Our main office is in Elk Grove, off of Bond Road, and then we have another satellite office in Woodland to help cover Yolo County operations. You told me to turn this on. There we go. All right. There we did. I figured it out. So our goal is to try to protect public health from mosquito-borne disease. This is both from a specific disease transmission cycle, which in our particular area, the main disease that we have transmitted by mosquitoes is West Nile virus. We've had that since 2004 here in California, so we're going on 21 years of West Nile virus transmission to the human population in Sacramento County. But we also monitor and reduce mosquitoes in just general abundance. So especially now that we're starting to get into the summertime and people want to go outside, you have events in the evening time, that's when mosquitoes are most active, and so our goal is to be able to try to limit the abundance of mosquitoes throughout so that people can enjoy their backyards, can enjoy their public events, can be outside, and not be bitten by mosquitoes and/or have disease transmission associated with it. Mosquito season is definitely here. As the weather warms up, this is when mosquitoes start to become more active. Mosquitoes specifically lay their eggs in water and breed in water. So mostly standing water, so you tend not to see mosquitoes in flowing rivers or creeks or lakes. Mosquitoes in water are very, very small, so they need standing stagnant water, which is why when you have things like rice fields or irrigation ditches, or horse troughs or backyard swimming pools, that's a perfect habitat for mosquito breeding, if it's an unmaintained swimming pool. So our goal is to be able to try to find those sources, specifically looking around throughout Sacramento and Yolo County. We have a technician that works specifically in Galt. We have a technician that works in and around various areas. We have about 42 technicians that go out and every day their job is to be able to try to find a lot of these sources. And so here's just a picture of a number of sources. For us, it's very easy to spot agricultural sources when you look at rice fields in Sacramento and Yolo County. We have about 45,000 acres of rice. That breeds a lot of mosquitoes, so we spend a lot of attention there. You look at agricultural areas, you look at, we have Consumnis River Preserve, Nature Conservancy, Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge, so we have some other large properties that have water on their land and they breed mosquitoes. Those are easy for us to spot. The harder thing for us to spot is what's in people's backyards, right? I can't see beyond the fence, and we really need the public to be aware of mosquito breeding and to give us a call if you're seeing mosquitoes or being bothered by mosquitoes. Again, we have a technician that's out in your area every single day, so a lot of times when you call, we'll be out there within the hour or two. Worst-case scenario, we're out there within 24 hours. We want to be very responsive to be able to try to reduce that population as quickly as possible so that you can enjoy your outdoors and make sure that you're not breeding mosquitoes on your own property. We go through what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first is public information. We have a very active social media campaign. We do a lot of radio, television, print, but we do a lot of public events as well. So we go to a number of different, we have a lot of school presentations that we do, neighborhood associations, and other weekend events that are happening. We were just at the Sacramento County Fair, but we do a number of those things, and we're always open to expanding if there's another one in your particular area that we can help with. The second part of that is surveillance, so we set traps throughout our district. We collect traps every single day. In our particular area, we have about 24 different species of mosquitoes. Not all mosquitoes transmit disease, but the ones that we have most prevalent do transmit disease, unfortunately. So we pick up traps every single day, we monitor the populations, we bring those back to our lab in Elk Grove, we separate them out by species and by sex, because only female mosquitoes bite, male mosquitoes don't bite. Female mosquitoes are looking for the protein in your blood so that they can lay their eggs. Male mosquitoes just feed on nectar and mate with the females. Not a bad gig, but we're really kind of targeting the, and we'll test for the female mosquitoes to make sure that we don't have active disease transmission in our particular area. So we're looking at abundance of numbers, seeing if numbers are rising, if they're falling, what is it in relation to this time last year, and what's happening in our area around us. Not just us, but we work with San Joaquin County, we work with Placer County, we work with our surrounding districts that all have their own individual territories. Then we have a biological control program. This is our mosquito fish at our facility in Elk Grove. If you've ever driven by, we have 23 ponds, earthen ponds, that breed mosquito fish. We plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year just in Sacramento and Yolo County. These are very small, we call mosquito fish "gambuja," and we plant these in rice fields, agricultural areas, horse troughs, backyard swimming pools that are being unmaintained. All the public has to do is give us a call, we'll come out and make sure that it's going to be a suitable source for the mosquito fish to take care of the mosquito larvae and to survive, so that they can take care of the problem long-term, and that's free of charge. Then we have an ecological management department. This is where we work with landowners like CRP, Stone Lakes, Nature Conservancy, large landowners that are essentially are having standing water on their property. We have a dump truck and BACCO, and we work with them on implementing best management practices so that they can still maintain their mission of wildlife habitat, but also reducing the mosquito populations on their property. And then, of course, our control operations, as I mentioned, we have a technician that works in Galt or works throughout the district. Every single day, they look for these mosquito breeding sources and treat them appropriately, and then our control operations also expand to adult mosquito control. So our technicians on a daily basis are looking for standing water and treating larvae in the water. But once they emerge as adults and we have adult mosquitoes that are flying and specifically infected adult mosquitoes, then we have to do adult mosquito operations, and that's anywhere from a backpack or an ATV, a truck, and to a higher-profile airplane that goes over town. We do a lot of airplane work in our agricultural areas, specifically in our rice fields. We're out there all the time, but when we fly over town, it gets a little bit more press news, and so we want to make sure that people are aware that that is a component of our work. This is a general graph of West Nile virus activity, particularly in Sacramento County last year. As you can see, Galt doesn't have any red circles or yellow triangles, which is great, so last year we did not detect any West Nile virus activity in Galt. We have a number of traps out here, so you guys are doing a great job. As you can see, Sacramento County has a lot to learn from Galt. You can print that in the paper, I suppose. I do want to try to highlight the number of human cases. So last year, we saw a dip in human cases from 2023, and this is reportable human cases for West Nile virus disease in California. And so while 129, the vast majority, the probably 95% of those cases, are what we call the neuroinvasive form of the disease. This requires hospitalization, can lead to paralysis, blindness, and of course even death, and so it's encephalitis-like symptoms, but the vast majority of cases never even get reported, because most people get West Nile, get West Nile fever, they're flu-like symptoms. So you stay in bed, you drink orange juice, you recover in a week or two, you never go to the doctor, you never get diagnosed. And so for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, those 129, the CDC estimates is there is another 30 to 70 other West Nile cases that just go unreported. So really, you're talking about thousands of people that are impacted from West Nile on an annual basis per year in California. And some of these symptoms can last just a week, some of them last quite a bit longer. There was a survey done by California Department of Public Health back in 2006 where they interviewed patients that had experienced symptoms of West Nile virus, and over 50% of them were still experiencing some symptom a year later. So think about that body ache, or that rash, or that headache that's still happening a year after being infected. It can be very debilitating, so we want people to recognize there's some simple things to try to help prevent that, but understand that it can be a very serious disease. One thing that we are continuing to work on is detections of invasive mosquitoes. So as I mentioned, we have 24 different species of mosquitoes here in Sacramento and Yolo County, and we have a brand-new one, but we first detected it in 2019. This is typically, it's an 80s egypti, it's Asian tiger mosquito. It's typically a mosquito that is found in Central America, Mexico, South America, Asia, and the concern with this is that this particular mosquito can transmit more exotic diseases like dengue, Zika, and chikungunya. So if it gets established here, then similar to West Nile, we could have local cases of those more exotic diseases. And specifically in California, two years ago, they had a couple, two locally-acquired cases of dengue in Southern California, and when I say locally-acquired, what that means is someone traveled to an area where dengue is endemic, got bit by an infected mosquito, then came home, experienced those symptoms, got bit by a local mosquito at their home.
We're going to move that to a future meeting. Is that correct, Tina?
Correct.
All right. Nothing else from council, then we will move on to our only presentation of this evening, which is the Sacramento Yellow Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Report.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the invitation to come out and talk a little bit about mosquito control we do in your particular area. My name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager. We cover Sacramento and Yolo County. Our main office is in Elk Grove off of Bond Road. And then we have another satellite office in Woodland to help cover Yolo County operations. You told me to turn this on. There we go. All right. There we did. I figured it out. So our goal is to try to protect public health from mosquito borne disease. This is both from a specific disease transmission cycle, which in our particular area, the main disease that we have transmitted by mosquitoes is West Nile virus. We've had that since 2004 here in California. So we're going on 21 years of West Nile virus transmission to the human population in Sacramento County. But we also monitor and reduce mosquitoes in just general abundance. So especially now that we're starting to get into the summertime and people want to go outside, you have events in the evening time, that's when mosquitoes are most active. And so our goal is to be able to try to limit the abundance of mosquitoes throughout so that people can enjoy their backyards, can enjoy their their public events, can be outside and not be bitten by mosquitoes and/or have disease transmission associated with it. Mosquito season is definitely here. As the weather warms up, this is when mosquitoes start to become more active. Mosquitoes specifically lay their eggs in water and breed in water. So mostly standing water. So you tend not to see mosquitoes in flowing rivers or creeks or lakes. Mosquitoes in water are very, very small, so they need standing stagnant water, which is why when you have things like rice fields or irrigation ditches or horse troughs or backyard swimming pools, that's a perfect habitat for mosquito breeding, if it's an unmaintained swimming pool. So our goal is to be able to try to find those sources, specifically looking around throughout Sacramento and Yolo County. We have a technician that works specifically in Galt. We have a technician that works in and around various areas. We have about 42 technicians that go out and every day their job is to be able to try to find a lot of these sources. And so here's just a picture of a number of sources. For us, it's very easy to spot agricultural sources when you look at rice fields in Sacramento and Yolo County. We have about 45,000 acres of rice that breeds a lot of mosquitoes. So we spend a lot of attention there. You look at agricultural areas, you look at, we have Consumerless River Preserve, Nature Conservancy, Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge. So we have some other large properties that have water on their on their land and they breed mosquitoes. Those are easy for us to spot. The harder thing for us to spot is what's in people's backyards, right? I can't see beyond the fence. And we really need the public to be aware of mosquito breeding and to give us a call if you're seeing mosquitoes or being bothered by mosquitoes. Again, we have a technician that's out in your area every single day. So a lot of times when you call, we'll be out there within the hour or two. Worst case scenario, we're out there within 24 hours. We want to be very responsive to be able to try to reduce that population as quickly as possible so that you can enjoy your outdoors and make sure that you're not breeding mosquitoes on your own property. We go through what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. The first is public information. We have a very active social media campaign. We do a lot of radio, television, print. But we do a lot of public events as well. So we go to a number of different, we have a lot of school presentations that we do, neighborhood associations and other weekend events that are happening. We were just at the Sacramento County Fair, but we do a number of those things. And we're always open to expanding if there's another one in your particular area that we can we can help with. The second part of that is surveillance. So we set traps throughout our district. We collect traps every single day. In our particular area, we have about 24 different species of mosquitoes. Not all mosquitoes transmit disease, but the ones that we have most prevalent do transmit disease, unfortunately. So we pick up traps every single day. We monitor the populations. We bring those back to our lab in Elk Grove. We separate them out by species and by sex because only female mosquitoes bite. Male mosquitoes don't bite. Female mosquitoes are looking for the protein in your blood so that they can lay their eggs. Male mosquitoes just feed on nectar and mate with the females. Not a bad gig, but we're really kind of targeting the, and we'll test for the female mosquitoes to make sure that we don't have active disease transmission in our particular area. So we're looking at abundance of numbers, seeing if numbers are rising, if they're falling, what is it in relation to this time last year and what's happening in our area around us? Not just us, but we work with San Joaquin County. We work with Placer County. We work with our surrounding districts that all have their own individual territories. Then we have a biological control program. This is our mosquito fish at our facility in Elk Grove. If you've ever driven by, we have 23 ponds, earthen ponds that breed mosquito fish. We plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year just in Sacramento and Yolo County. These are very small. We call mosquito fish gambuja. And we plant these in rice fields, agricultural areas, horse troughs, backyard swimming pools that are being unmaintained. All the public has to do is give us a call. We'll come out and make sure that it's going to be a suitable source for the mosquito fish to take care of the mosquito larvae and to survive so that they can take care of the problem long term, and that's free of charge. Then we have an ecological management department. This is where we work with landowners like CRP, Stone Lakes, Nature Conservancy, large landowners that are essentially are having standing water on their property. We have a dump truck and BACCO, and we work with them on implementing best management practices so that they can still maintain their mission of wildlife habitat, but also reducing the mosquito populations on their property. And then, of course, our control operations, as I mentioned, we have a technician that works in Galt or works throughout the district every single day. They look for these mosquito breeding sources and treat them appropriately. And then our control operations also expand to adult mosquito control. So our technicians on a daily basis are looking for standing water and treating larvae in the water. But once they emerge as adults and we have adult mosquitoes that are flying and specifically infected adult mosquitoes, then we have to do adult mosquito operations. And that's anywhere from a backpack or an ATV, a truck, and to a higher profile airplane that goes over town. And we do a lot of airplane work in our agricultural areas, specifically in our rice fields. We're out there all the time. But when we fly over town, it gets a little bit more press news. And so we want to make sure that people are aware that that is a component of our of our of our work. This is a general graph of West Nile virus activity, particularly in Sacramento County last year. As you can see, Galt doesn't have any red circles or yellow triangles, which is great. So last year, we did not detect any West Nile virus activity in Galt. We have a number of traps out here, so you guys are doing a great job. As you can see, Sacramento County has a lot to learn from Galt. You can print that in the paper, I suppose. I do want to try to highlight the number of human cases. So last year, we saw a dip in human cases from 2023. And this is reportable human cases for West Nile virus disease in California. And so while 129, the vast majority, the probably 95% of those cases are what we call the neuroinvasive form of the disease. This requires hospitalization, can lead to paralysis, blindness, and of course even death. And so it's encephalitis-like symptoms, but the vast majority of cases never even get reported because most people get West Nile, get West Nile fever, they're flu-like symptoms. So you stay in bed, you drink orange juice, you recover in a week or two, you never go to the doctor, you never get diagnosed. And so for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, those 129, the CDC estimates is there is another 30 to 70 other West Nile cases that just go unreported. So really, you're talking about thousands of people that are impacted from West Nile on an annual basis per year in California. And some of these symptoms can last just a week. Some of them last quite a bit longer. There was a survey done by California Department of Public Health back in 2006 where they interviewed patients that had experienced symptoms of West Nile virus, and over 50% of them were still experiencing some symptom a year later. So think about that body ache or that rash or that headache that's still happening a year after being infected. Can be very debilitating. So we want people to recognize there's some simple things to try to help prevent that, but understand that it is can be a very serious disease. One thing that we are continuing to work on is detections of invasive mosquitoes. So as I mentioned, we have 24 different species of mosquitoes here in Sacramento and Yolo County, and we have a brand new one. But we first detected it in 2019. This is typically, it's an 80s egypti. It's Asian tiger mosquito. It's typically a mosquito that is found in in Central America, Mexico, South America, Asia. And the concern with this is that this particular mosquito can transmit more exotic diseases like dengue, Zika, and chikungunya. So if it gets established here, then similar to West Nile, we could have local cases of those more exotic diseases. And specifically in California, two years ago, they had a couple, two locally acquired cases of dengue in Southern California. And when I say locally acquired, what that means is someone traveled to an area where dengue is endemic, got bit by an infected mosquito, then came home, experienced those symptoms, got bit by a local mosquito at their home in Southern California, and then that mosquito picked up dengue from that person and then bit another person and transmitted it. And so two years ago, there were two cases. Last year, there were 18 cases in Southern California. So the problem is starting to get larger and larger. So one of the concerns that we have is where are we detecting these invasive mosquitoes and how are we trying to treat them? Because these particular mosquitoes like to bite people and they like to be in and around homes. They're not agricultural mosquitoes. They like to breed in and around people's homes. And that's why we need the public's help in being able to identify, are you seeing mosquitoes? You have a problem? Give us a call. Let us come out and investigate and find out where they're coming from. So as you can see, in the city of Galt, we have had one detection there. We have a number of other areas within Sacramento County that have much higher detections, but it's something that we're continuing to monitor. So in response to this, there's a new technology that just came out this this past year. University of Kentucky, and it's called sterile insect technique. And sterile insect technique has been used by USDA for decades. They've done it for screw worm. They've done it for light brown apple moth. They've done it for a number of different insects. It's now starting to come to the world of mosquitoes. And the concept here is that male and female mosquitoes need to mate to be able to produce eggs. So you sterilize the males or you release males into a popular, into an area. They mate with the wild females. And when they mate with the wild females, then the progeny is no good. So the eggs don't hatch. You don't have an issue with the the expansion of particular mosquitoes in this area. So this is new technology. It's been undergoing a number of trials. They did one in Fresno about 10 years ago, Southern California, the Florida Keys, the Caribbean Islands, lots of different places. And it's been very successful. It's now become commercially available for mosquito controlled districts across the country. And our district is going to use utilize this method in the area of Natomas in North Sacramento this year. And there's about another dozen agencies in California that are also starting to implement this particular technique as well. So if this invasive mosquito problem gets bigger and bigger, this may be another tool that we have to be able to try to crash the population. We're not trying to eliminate or eradicate it by any means. We're just trying to get the numbers down to where we don't have a risk of human transmission of disease. So moving forward for us, continuing to explore the use of SIT, continue our surveillance and control efforts. And when we do find West Nile virus, we always send emails out to neighborhood associations, to the city council, let you know exactly what it is that we may be doing. You can sign up on our website, fightthebite.net. If you want to know about activities that are happening within your zip code, you can punch in your zip code and your email address. And anytime that we're doing adult mosquito control in your area, we'll send you an email. So you can sign up for that. And essentially, we're encouraging the public to try to help us. If you're seeing mosquitoes around during the day, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, just call us. Give us a call. This is what we do. We come out again, same day or very next day to be able to try to take care of the problem. Another service that we provide, these mosquito wipes, repellent wipes that we have, we buy this stuff by the pallet. So we want it to be used. We understand, obviously, as we get into the summer here, there are a number of events that people are doing in the evening time, movies in the park or picnics, those types of things. Give us a call. We're more than happy to provide the repellent free of charge along with information about mosquitoes so that people can try to protect themselves. And with that, you can get more information at our website, fightthebite.net, or give us a call, 1-800-429-1022. And with that, does the council have any questions? Oh, one other thing I did want to try to highlight. Your appointee on our board, Marcia Mooney, has been an invaluable resource. She was president a couple of years ago, has a very strong voice on our board, and we're very pleased and happy to have her be appointed by the city of Galt to to represent you on our board. So I wanted to highlight that as well.
All right. Thank you. Does the council have any questions on the presentation?
I have a quick question, and I don't know that you'll know the answer. Because we're right on the boundary of the, you know, do you happen to know what the San Joaquin area?
Yeah, they're horrible. No, they're they're, it's it's an excellent program. We work very well with San Joaquin County. We've got a long-term relationship with that. And we recognize this is the same thing. It's it's, I don't want to call it, it's a little territorial. It's funny. Whenever there's a problem, they always blame the other. So but no, we work very well with San Joaquin County along. And then we recognize because it's on the border. When we see, when we have activity, we always give them a call, give them a heads up, and they do the same thing for us. And so because we have, we share such a long border, goes all the way down into the Delta and things like that. Yeah, we have a very good working relationship with San Joaquin.
I understood your question as you were saying, how are they doing with identified issues compared to what we're doing? Because since they're like right, you know, like a mile away.
Right. Yes, absolutely. I know that because I looked at their data as well. They didn't detect anything on the other side of the border. So they don't have any, didn't have any West Nile virus last year, but you know, each year is a little bit different. Yeah.
All right. Well, that's good news. And and just to, I always ask you guys to remind the public who may be watching, you guys provides a few free services for this type of thing. Like if somebody has a pool that they, for some reason, have failed to be able to maintain, and there there's this misconception sometimes that if they call, there's going to be a fee for you guys. You guys come out and we'll put fish or whatever.
Correct. Yeah.
Can you explain that?
If you give us a call about mosquitoes, and specifically if you have a bad pool or you've got a low area on your property that you think may be breeding mosquitoes, give us a call. We'll come out, we'll treat it accordingly. There's no charge. We want to make sure that we're taking care of the mosquito population because obviously, specifically on like a bad pool, that can breed thousands of mosquitoes. And mosquitoes fly. They don't just stay on the property, right? So that that has an impact on the entire neighborhood. So absolutely, we'll provide that free of charge. We're not going to clean it up. So we have been asked, are we going to start treating it? No, but we'll make sure that it's not breeding mosquitoes for sure. We also offer identification. So some people bring in insects. We have entomologists on on staff that can identify insects. We do tick sampling as well. So lyme disease is an issue, not necessarily in the Galt area, but as you get a little bit closer into the foothills. So we do tick surveillance and tick testing. And and then we also do yellow jacket control as well. So if you're being seen, yellow jackets or WASP problem, give us a call. We'll be more than happy to come out and give you some advice.
Really? You guys do that too, huh?
Yeah.
That's a big problem in the country properties a lot of times.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. What about bee stuff?
Bee stuff, we would, we would send off to CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and/or there's a number, there's a bee organization within Sacramento County. We don't really deal with bees too much.
And are those pay, those are chargeable kind of things that those people do typically?
CDFW, maybe not. It depends. I mean, there's a lot of, like, if there's a bee infestation, and we've been called out on a couple of them, there's a number of beekeepers that will that will take the bees. They want the bees. So they'll come take them free of charge. If it gets to be a big enough problem, then the fire department will come in. We've seen that where they put out soap and and it's a, it's an interesting process. So depends on how big the infestation is, but that's why we try to call or help, call the local beekeeping association because there are beekeepers that are around that want those bees. And they've got tools to be able to try to help.
All right. And so the 1-800 number and the info@fightthebite.net is where people would contact if they suspect mosquito activity on their property.
Yeah. And worst case scenario, if it's not something that we handle, we'll get you in contact with somebody who can take care of it for you.
All right. Well, there's no further comments from council. Thank you for the presentation, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to item H, which would be our general public comment. Tina, do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes. Ken Lee.
Oh, yeah. Just read our statement.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lee, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ken Lee. I wanted to bring up that the library in Sacramento County has a new program where you can check out an E-trike bike at the library and keep it for a week. So I was wondering, is there any way that they can try to initiate a program at the library? Or it'd be nice for the seniors to get around and maybe have part of the senior center or something like that. Also, I wanted to know if they can match C Street, the parking space paint, you know, the striping from the new part of C Street all the way up to the Fourth Street promenade. So that way, it looks like C Street corridor with the same paint. On the way over here at 4:45, I almost had a double head-on coming out of the east parking lot of the flea market. Two cars came straight in, and I had to split between the middle of both of them, and neither of them bothered to slow down. And basically, it was a game of chicken. Either that or it's a demolition derby track there now. It is very inconvenient to go without a car. My last car was hit, and basically I couldn't go shopping. I had to take the bus and my doctor's appointment. While my vehicle was being being repaired, going through the steps for the claim and reimbursement, it takes time. The Galt Claims Department, their company handled the payment pretty good, but it took a month without a car. And settlement was fair from the city of Galt for the current damages. But I like to thank my commercial driving training to avoid these accidents. That's how I basically avoid these things. But, you know, if I had a bigger vehicle, I guess I would take them head-on because I have the right of way. And so, you know, with my little car, I'm kind of hesitant to take and take on head-on vehicles. And that's the flea market again. They're always doing that. Even the staff at the flea market is saying they see cars coming all through the day the wrong way. And they don't seem to care, and they don't seem to slow down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Armando, have we, this got brought up before. Have we, there is signage that says wrong way or something, right? But I remember there being a discussion of maybe that the signage wasn't very visible or something, or what it?
Oh, it's a large sign right at the entrance, says do not enter.
Okay. I drive by there every day. I think I should know without having to ask you. I'll have to peek at it and see my thoughts, but we'll talk offline. Thank you. Anybody, any more further public comment? Okay. All right. Moving on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Pratton.
All right. Yes, I attended Air Quality Management District Board meeting on the 22nd of May. There really wasn't too much to report out on that. Pretty simple meeting. I did, however, this morning actually took my my orientation because we were kind of late getting to the table because of the election stuff. I didn't get to do an orientation early in the year. So it was pretty interesting. They do have their own building in Sacramento, which which they're looking at selling right now, downsizing. Beyond that, it was just a good education for me on the difference between the Air Resources Board and the Air Quality Management District Board. If anybody's interested in that information, happy to give them that. And that's all I have to report on.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Nothing to report this evening, mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
Good evening. We, I attended one special meeting that was called by the CGA. And the meeting was called because our chair resigned. So they discussed various needs for staffing with the CGA, which is the Consumers Groundwater Authority, for everyone that doesn't like acronyms. They determined that they really only need a person that's part-time, so they're trying to figure that out. And they're going to work, put together an RFP to address that. That was the special meeting. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Reed. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes, on May 29th, I attended a SECAG meeting. We actually approved the blueprint that they presented to us here two weeks ago. So that was approved. We, there was a lot of talk about transit. Obviously, that's the main thing with SECAG, or the biggest thing with SECAG. One of the topics of conversation, they had a professor from UCLA come and speak, and she talked a lot about micro transit. So just to put it in perspective, you have, and now John's going to have to help me, the main, your big buses, you have that. And then you have your own personal transit, and you have this micro transit that a lot of entities are turning to. So think of a kind of a dial-a-ride. We're kind of doing it. It's dial-a-ride would be a port similar to, or would fit into that. But it's kind of in the bigger cities, trying to get some cars off the street, but the bus lines, you know, only come so often. And so this micro transit is something that people are looking at. But it did trigger some thoughts in my head because I felt like, you know, a lot of this urban talk, you know, for us, it doesn't quite fit exactly. But what they were talking about within the county, and I think it might be something that would be good for us to start maybe approaching Supervisor Hume about, is maybe trying to, because the county is interested in this this micro transit in their rural areas. But they need to have hubs. And I think that Walmart and Save Mart and the new Simmerhorn Ranch are great hubs for people to come to, to pick up another transit station or something like that so that they could be shopping. So for us, I think I can see an economic development benefit in staying part of the conversation in it. Let's see. So just for for thought, food for thought, that micro transit right now, what they're charging is anywhere from $26 to $46 per ride one way. So that's like if you were, if we were to take an Uber, I believe, I think someone took an Uber from here up to the airport. I think it's about $100. But what the, and it works with Uber too. If you put more people in the vehicle, you can split that and bring that cost per person down. And with the micro transit, you're looking at maybe a van, a carpool van type thing. And if you have five people from Galt that need to get wherever, wherever you're going, say the airport, then you can split that cost and get that cost down. So there's a lot of ins and outs of that. It's kind of interesting. I also, on June 2nd, just yesterday, had a, what are we called? The Policy and Innovation Meeting. We had an interesting, what are they called? Lobbyist update. And one of the things that's going on in Galt is AB 609 and Senate Bill 607. And what a lot of these are talking about is taking and trying to streamline infill projects, but more so trying to take off, and I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, trying to take off the liability so that what it's trying to pass is that you cannot sue for SEQA over infill. So that might ring a bell for some of us that are, you know, for those infill projects. If they, that's not a reason someone could sue us for is over SEQA. It hasn't passed yet, but that's what they're trying to push through. And then I believe it's AB 681. It could be Senate Bill or SB 681. This and our economic, or not economic development, but community development might be interested in watching this because this may possibly limit HCD's authority over Arena. So we might have a little bit, I don't know, again, could be a good thing, but maybe it's better the devil you know. I don't, because I don't know who then would have a say over that at that point. But so a couple of bills to to watch. And other than that, we, you know, there was other lobbying things from back in DC, but I don't think any of it would surprise you. It's still a lot of unknown going on back there. So that's it.
All right. Thank you for that information. I personally have nothing that I've attended since last meeting to report on. So we'll move on to the information and consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 11 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Does the council wish to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion?
Eight. Pull for discussion.
Item J8. All right. And I actually will be pulling J10 for a couple of questions. Anything else? All right. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve. All right. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, and 11. Briefly, those items are, item one, receive file warrants. Item two is a minutes of regular meeting of May 20th. Item three is designation of applicant's agent. Resolution for non-state emergencies, designation of finance director, accounting manager and budget manager as the city's authorized agents. Number four is the adopt resolution indicating the city's commitment to delivering the awarded project on time for the Sacramento area council of governments. SEQA mitigation negative declaration. Uh, item five is the approval of Senate Bill one, annual project list for fiscal year 25, 26. Item six is the award of bid for the industrial water treatment plant test well project. Item seven is the adoption of the resolution of intent to annex territory into facility district 2021 for the Summerfield project. Item, item nine is the amendment number two to agree for consulting services with well down engineering. And number nine, or I'm sorry, number 11 is the, to adopt the ordinance 2025 dash zero eight to the Galt City Municipal Code regarding the fireworks ordinance. Don't have a motion to approve those nine items.
Uh, real quick, we do have public comment on one of those items.
I apologize for that. Go ahead.
Phyllis?
Thank you. My question is, well, basically it's, it's something that has been going on for a while. I understand that you want to put this through to get transportation improvement. But where does it come in for Galt? For instance, there's a railroad stop, Elk Grove, there's one in Stockton. We don't have one here. The freight goes through. So what I want to know is with something like this, where is it going to be effective for improvement within Galt proper?
Which, which item are you referring to that we're just-
The number, number four.
Number four, okay.
Adopt the resolution indicating the city's commitment to delivering the awarded project on time for Sacramento area council of governments for county state transportation improvement program. What will we see improved for especially transportation here in Galt? Now, Bonnie had mentioned some that were suggestions. But my thing is, we have a railroad going through here. The freight goes through maybe three o'clock in the morning or whatever. But don't you think we should leave have a people railroad stop here? We pay for Elk Grove. Like when they put the bridge in, we paid for the lights. I used to joke with my husband. He should rest in peace and say, which light's yours? Cause we pay for it. But we need here. We need railroad here and other forms of transportation before we go and we pay for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Do we have any other public comment regarding those other items? Okay. All right. Um, with that, I will be looking for a motion to approve those nine items that I read.
Moved.
Moved by the vice mayor.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratton. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Those items are approved five zero. Moving on to item J eight, Mr. Reed has pulled this item for discussion. Mr. Reed, proceed.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I know that in the staff report, we have a lot more information than what is in the, is in the agenda. And so I wanted to make sure that the public knew a lot of the information that we have. And it doesn't look like we're just going out and buying two brand-new vehicles, right? So it could, because the way that it looks is we're going out and buying a 2023 Chevy Silverado and a 2025 John Deere Backhoe. Uh, after discussing it with, uh, Mr. Griffin, these are to replace two vehicles that we already have. So we have a 1992 Backhoe and a 19, or I'm sorry, 1995 Backhoe and a 1992 Ford dump truck. Right? So from my Googling, it says that those vehicles, the lifespan is 10 years. The staff report says that they're 20 years. Either one of those, right? We're well beyond that by 10, 13 years. So I want to make sure that the public understands that we're just not going out and buying. We're replacing some very old, very needed vehicles. And that's what this money is going towards. And I just want to reach out to Director Griffin. That's all correct, right?
Yes, Councilwoman Reed, that is correct.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Since he pulled this, just a quick question. Um, I, my, it doesn't say it in the staff report, but isn't there, we dealt with something with one of the other vehicles where if the vehicle is prior to like 2011 or 12, if it's a diesel, we can't no longer use them for municipal, municipal use or something? Cause that wasn't mentioned in this report, but that happened with another vehicle you guys replaced. Is that not the case here? Are you aware what I'm talking about?
I would have to talk to our fleet staff. I'm-
Yeah, it was the, uh, it was the lift truck, the boom truck we had to replace because something about Galt smog laws with municipal after it's, after it's post- anyways, we can talk offline about it, but I, I was just curious if that's something to do. But clearly they're really old, so. And just to clarify, this was approved by council. We had budgeted it for this back in June of last year. You're just now bringing forward saying this is what you finally have given out to bid. You got the three bids for each vehicle and you're buying them. Those are all within that approved budget number that you asked for, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, the reason we're here tonight is these items are in excess of what the city manager's authority is to approve a, a purchase.
Right.
Because they're both over $70,000, we need city council authorization to purchase these two pieces of equipment.
But we did the, we did budget this with them this fund to last year.
They were in the budget, I'm sorry, yes. They were in the budget and the aggregate total is less than we had budgeted for these two pieces of equipment.
Thank you for that. Okay. All right. Any other comments about this item or not? I'll look for a motion to approve. Item J eight.
I'll move.
We, sorry, we have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh. Sorry, folks. A little slow on the up and up.
Mr. Brosman?
Good evening, city council and citizens of Galt. Um, back out after a hiatus of a month, uh, didn't look like there was that much fun on your agenda, so I decided to take vacation. Juan Tim, the more I hear you talk, the more I'm happy that you're sitting on the council. Cause you're absolutely right. In my opinion, there's not enough information looking at that. Sean, I agree with you entirely because one of my questions looking at was last year we approved this. And why are we needing a second unit or a third unit or a fourth unit? How many dump trucks does the city need? How many Backhoes does the city need? Um, how often do we use them? Why do we need them? One of the things I heard brought up here was age. Heavy-duty equipment usually is evaluated on hours. Dump trucks are evaluated on mileage. To me, I, I'm tight on the dollar, as you guys know. I mean, I've gotten up and spoken about dollars and I'm going to speak one more topic tonight about dollars. The other, and I assume that this happened, but I would love to see in this section when we put it on the agenda is six bids received. This is the bid we took. I want to see a little clarification there as far as that we're doing our due diligence and shopping around when we're buying a Backhoe, shopping around while we're buying a truck. That's all my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman, and thank you for your comments. Just to answer a couple of your questions, in the staff report, it may not have been the agenda, but in the staff report, it did have, um, the bids. They went out and got three bids for each. There was a significant difference on a couple of them. And, uh, and as Mr. Griffin, um, did report, we came in under what we thought we were going to have to spend. And the other question was, this will be the only dump truck and the only Backhoe. The other ones have been having service issues that they no longer find feasible to keep repairing because of their age. So this, we don't, this actually won't be a second. It'll be a, it'll be a one and one again that we have, so. I hope that answers some of the stuff that you asked, but thank you, Mr. Brosman, for always coming.
Uh, a question and then a clarification on what Mr. Reed said. We don't have any extra information that is not public. All of that report is online and available to anybody to pull up. It's not the most convenient thing to do, but you can also, and Tina's not going to like this, but you can as a, as a public resident request that the, the packets are emailed to you if you don't want to have to go search it. So you can email, um, the city clerk and say, please put me on the distribution list. And then you will have all the same information that we have. Might cause more questions, so, so. But I did have a question with the trucks, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this before, it just came, popped into my head. With the old trucks, what is the plan for those?
We will follow city policy and probably surplus them. I don't know if there's any, there's probably some resale value. So city, there's a city policy that we follow, um, when we surplus equipment.
Mr. Griffin, could you, it might sound weird, but could you let me know when we do surplus those, what we end up getting for them? I'm just curious.
Yes, I can have our staff inform me and pass that information along.
Yeah. Yeah, this to me was an easy item. I had way more heartache about replacing that boom truck I mentioned because it was like a 2012. And I was like, wow, it's barely being used, but there was some smog stuff going on with that that was, but. All right. So, uh, looking for a motion to approve item J eight.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Reed. I will second it. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Item J is approved five zero. Next item is item J 10, which is the authorization to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed 326,000 for the replacement of the playground structure of the sports complex park. I pulled this item tonight because we did receive some, some emails from the public uh, on this item asking some questions, and I do appreciate those questions. They were great, good questions. And, uh, I did consult with Mr. Solis this afternoon, but I thought it, um, important that we bring a couple of these questions out into the public in the open meeting. There was some concerns raised with, um, so the, we've been, we've been, so incorrect, jumping incorrect for a moment. We've been replacing some playground structures so far. We've done a few. And we're continuing on. So this is the sports complex one over here near us that way. And, um, the amount on this one is, is more than some of the other ones were. Um, I know there was some reference to averages. I know that the tot lot at Ashborough, which is a tiny little playground, that one was really inexpensive. But obviously if you're looking at averages, that brought the average way down for those. Whereas this one is one of our larger ones and it's going to have some shade structures and some ADA stuff that's been asked for by the community, which kind of ran the price up. So that's first question is to explain the difference, why this one's more. That's question one, Mr. Solis. Question two is, we did this under a cooperative bidding. Um, so I would like either you or Mr. Arias to just briefly explain what the cooperative bidding is in compared to just going out and getting bids, like low bidder kind of scenario. And then, uh, and then question three is, what is the value? What's the overall value outside of money with, instead of bidding each playground separately, continuing to go with the ones that we've, the company we've already been using instead of playgrounds? So, Mr. Solis, do you want to take?
Tina, could I have you pull up that PowerPoint that I sent over to you earlier? I apologize. I forgot my glasses, so I'm going to do my best. It's, uh, kind of hard when you're this old. So the cooperative purchasing, um, purchasing supplies simplifies the purchase, uh, procurement process for public agencies and nonprofits by aligning them to purchase through existing contracts negotiated by other public agencies. Uh, the purchasing contracts have already gone through a competitive, uh, process and evaluation uh, before they're awarded to the supplier. And the benefits of the purchasing for agencies include reduced procurement costs, uh, great time efficiency. If we actually went out to formal bid, this process could take anywhere from four to eight weeks, depending on how fast you can and timing on putting it in the paper, things like that. So, um, and then it's easy, it's, uh, free for us to join that, um, as, as a city. And if you can go to the next slide, Tina, please. And our, our, uh, policy allows us to do this under F three. It states that we are authorized to enter into these type of purchasing. So it sits, it says it there. Tina, if you can go to the next one. Now I'm going to go over why it's a little more expensive, um, when we received that email, like just, this is Lake Canyon Park. So you need to compare apples to apples. We actually put a two to five-year-old and a five to 12-year-old playground in this park here in, uh, 2023. And you see that it has six, uh, features. It's, uh, 208,000 completely installed. Now if you go to the next slide. This is the sports complex. You can see the, the difference between them. We're putting in nine features, two shade structures, and you can see the shade there. So during our park master plan meetings with our, with the residents, one of the things that they've said is that they wanted shade and they wanted ADA equipment. And we've added all of those into this, uh, playground. If you can go to the next slide, please. So if you compare the two, your nine features, two shade structures versus six, there's a difference of a hundred and, um, almost a hundred and $20,000, a hundred and $19,000. I think it's a good value. Looking, comparing the two, I think we're getting, uh, great value for the dollar. Now, if you can just go down a little bit more, um, Tina?
One more slide.
One more, I'm sorry. This is the top view, uh, on a larger scale. One more, please. This is the side view. You can see where you have the tot lot. On the left, you see ADA, uh, teeter-totter swing where you can have, um, it's ADA accessible. Next one, please. There's a closer up picture here where you can see right in the middle, you can sit right on it. The, what, what they're calling a tree has an area for somebody with, uh, ADA accessible to sit inside. And you can see the large shade structures. Uh, you can see the child in the blue in the background to the right of the tree has the drums. So it has the sensory, um, type of, uh, equipment. And next, Tina? And then you have the, um, swing, uh, the first swing where a parent can sit with the child as they swing together. So that's kind of an overview. And what we're, what we're doing is in 2018, we installed our first, I installed my first, uh, playground as a Parks and Rec director. And what I wanted to do is we found out that like Monterey Park, that company is no longer in business. We have another park that, um, I believe that's the one. Uh, there's another park that, um, is back in Europe. It takes eight weeks to get a park. A lot of these parks are, were built in the nineties, so they, they've lived their lifespan. And we wanted to find a company that we could use that's, has a good reputation, isn't go out of business. We can get good customer service from, and we wound up with what's called now Game Time. They've been bought over several times. They were Playcore. Um, now they're part of this bigger company that, uh, that's basically the, one of the leaders in the industries. So, uh, we get to see all the equipment at our CPS conference with, that we just attended a couple of months ago. And they are the main group in that building. Uh, so what we want to do is keep everything, um, pretty much with the same manufacturer. So when these play structures need to be replaced again, we can actually save parts, replace parts. One of the reasons we're replacing the playground structure at this complex is they no longer make parts for that. You know, the slides, both slides are gone, railings are gone. It's basically, there's not very many, um, activities to do there. So, did I answer all your questions? I'm sorry.
I believe so, yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, I mean, I will state for the public that I am, I haven't always been a fan of the cooperative bidding process. I mean, I actually, you know, advocated against it in several cases. One of them was a public works project. We end up going out to bid for it instead and we end up saving a lot of money. But these are also one-off projects. In this particular instance, I can see the value in, you know, if we've been happy with a company doing one playground, I don't think it would be prudent for us to, I mean, could we save a little bit of money? Possibly if we, if we individually bid out each, you know, playground structure and then end up with maybe a couple, you know, Playcore doing it or, uh, Game Time doing a couple, and then maybe we get a different company that does one park and so on and so forth. But what you end up with is you kind of ended, end up with a hodgepodge. And I think an old saying I like to use is that sometimes there's a better deal doesn't always mean the best price. You're looking for the overall package. And I think having good customer service and having consistency across the parks with the playgrounds, because we are consistent, we're, you know, we're doing them all in short order here with measure Q money and stuff. And so, um, could we save a little bit of money by bidding it out? You know, maybe, um, you know, there's some staff timing bidding and all that. So, I mean, it very well could possibly be. But in my opinion, I, I think there is a lot of value with, um, with going with, in this particular case, the cooperative bidding. That's just my thoughts, looking at my fellow council members, um, for that reason. And I think that, uh, you know, if we, if we were to get, uh, some fly-by-night company come in and do this particular project and we save a little money, and then in five years, the parts are not available because they're not around. And then we end up having to replace the whole thing because, you know- you know, then we end up spending more money. So it's like penny wise, pound foolish. So anyways, that's my thoughts on it. I'm, I want to say my thanks to Mr. Wenzel for bringing this forward so that we could talk about this publicly outside the consent. We're going to see if anybody has comment on this. Does council have any thoughts on this before I ask for public comment on this item?
I just have one. I know I told you earlier I didn't have any questions, but after I read it, or more, I do. For the remaining funds that's left in that project, what's next?
So, once this project is done and priced out, what we'd like to do at the fifty three C for that project includes all the sports complex upgrades. We'd like to start refurbishing the restrooms. So we want to see exactly how much money we have left over once this project is, is done.
Is there any public comment, Tina, on this item?
Chris Brosman.
Good evening again, city council. So I saw this on the agenda and tonight before this meeting decided I'd go take a look at the park and see what the park looked like. What I found was structures are all sound. You know, the, I'm not going to say they're shiny and new because they're not shiny and new. Faded slides. One swing was missing. Definitely could use some paint because they're faded paint. One trash can has been, in-ground trash cans been knocked over and is sideways. Grass was soggy around the complex. I can tell you, I walked across the grass the first time to get to the playground and my feet were sinking in mud. More disturbingly was the six to eight homeless people that were actually laid out all over the picnic tables down there. Because I'll tell you, if my kids were young, that wouldn't have been the park I would have stopped them to play. And we got baseball, softball, whatever going on right now. There were two individuals out there actually playing on the play structure right now. One was on a swing, swinging. The other one was climbing on the slide. I'm not necessarily a person to tear down. And as you know, I like pinching my pennies. I love looking at nice and shiny and new, to be frank with you. But maybe we use the shiny and new when we augment the old and we bring back some of the old. My personal experience is things that were built 20 years ago were built with a whole lot higher standards than they're being built today. I'm sad that if we can't get the slides anymore, you know, where there's no replacement slides, because the slides are faded. But they're still slideable. I would have slid on them and I don't think anyone wants to see that. Really, that was it. Other than my recommendation would be city council, take a look at the complex yourself and look, look at that playground and suggest you guys look at it and say, okay, do we need shiny and new? And do we want to spend three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars building shiny or new? Or do we want to put six structures in next to old and less shiny? That would just be my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman.
Harry Wenzel.
Thank you. My name was given in the introduction. It's always a pleasure to come to the council. It's always a pleasure working with Armando. He's a very responsive, very detailed in his answers. And I'm not going to argue that, you know, when you get a hodgepodge of things, I'm not going to argue that. Okay, you have fewer parts to replace. If you do your own mechanics, they get used to fixing them. There's, this is all, you know, common sense and common good business. Okay? A couple of things, though, that caught my eye is one, I think when you have a little more of a complex item like this, it really needs to go before the eyes of the council. And so complex in this means that if you, when I sent out the email Sean, I gave you and I gave to Armando, I put in PlayCor and Game Time and said, go take a look at their website. And what you'll find is these guys are loaded with, with guys on, you know, these are their executives. This is a shrine to the executives, and I can only imagine what these guys make. The playground structure is a business. There's quite a few companies out there. And they have a variety of prices. You can find them 50%, maybe even 30% of what we're paying right now. Okay? And I think when this originally came up, one of my suggestions was why don't we put somebody on an airplane? Or why don't we go look at infield installations and just think about it? And that would be my, my thought. Do we need to bid this? Do I need to get my way on this? No. But I think that the council needs to consider these kinds of things because now this is the sixth playground that's going in. And the first five averaged a hundred and sixty thousand. I know that, I don't want to be the accountant that drowns crossing the river two and a half feet deep. But it kind of pops out. And when you get, when you get into the bidding like we have here, where you, you just have the state doing the bidding for you, which the state, by the way, is going broke. And we, you lose a lot of transparency. Okay? And so like new information today, I mean, before the five and the decision, well, I mean, I don't want to get deep into it, but the last time there was the, the council thought that it had been bid and it really went through the other process, you know, the community process or the piggyback process. And I think that Armando and I had talked about that. We, you know, he, you know, he produced all the documents and so forth. And, and I appreciate that. But what you don't see is you don't see these guys going out and looking at stuff. They just are looking at numbers. And I don't know exactly how it works. It sounds to me like somebody like Game Time, they know how the system works. They write up the contract and they throw it over and they fill out a form and they check all the boxes. And, and now they're available. And PlayCor, Game Time, they've, they've got a big marketing presence. And from what I can see is their presence is less online, but they do have representatives. So they're like manufacturers reps. So they come in with whatever and they get to know our people. Our people get comfortable with them. And it's always a problem in procurement is that percept, perception in your mind is these guys got better quality, you know, it's like gaslighting. They hear it, you know, we're better than these guys or whatever. So I think that these kinds of numbers needs to, need to be explained. And if you take the time to look at like Game Time's quote, and one of the questions I had is there's a hundred and, well, there's twenty one thousand dollars of estimated freight. I would certainly want to look at that. And there's a hundred and, I think it's, I'm not seeing it right now, but there is, there was, oh, the installers, a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars to put this in. And so one of my suggestions is we should just have our engineers walk through there and talk about that installation. And, you know, it's, it's interesting because these are, these are, you know, something you can look at and you say, well, common sense. Do, does that really need to be 10,000 dollars? So I'm glad that it went before the council. I appreciate what Mondo did. It's in the hands of a capable council. And you might want to look at the procurement document again and think, you know, do we have it? So that we understand that it isn't just three bids. We don't just always have to have three bids. If you want to go to the other place, I think you should be, should try and bring transparency to it. What did the state do, you know, for them? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel.
Michaela Johnson.
Hi, council members. I just wanted to give a positive note that I have three small children and we often ride our bikes to about 80% of the parks in this town. And we really appreciate your guys' priority in updating and upgrading these parks. We are not frequenting some of them because of the condition they're in and because of the maybe homeless or the company that it keeps at certain parks. So I do really appreciate you guys putting the priority in the budget for this. I think it's super important that we have a park that is inclusive to all abilities. I believe Kat mentioned to me that there are no parks near here. My kids have been to one to Eldorado Hills, but that's the closest that I've seen. So I think it's super important to show our community members with children with disabilities that, you know, we care about their kids too and their needs are a priority. I think bringing in new parks and structures, like the energy and the visitors, it hopefully pushes out homeless to find another place to hang out because kids, play structures are not where they should be hanging out. Hopefully that the police has a plan with the city that they're going to have to be relocated, hopefully, so that kids do feel safe there. Budget is not my forte as far as this goes, so I trust that the Parks and Recs are doing their due diligence in finding the best quality and best price. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela.
Kat Seepold.
Hello, council. Hadn't planned on coming up here to talk about this, but obviously I wanted to kind of put my little spin on it from the chamber perspective. Obviously, an all-inclusive park is a great attraction for families, not just local communities, but also those from surrounding. The closest all-inclusive park we have is in Lathrup. And so for us to be able to draw those people, whether they are coming to the market or they are coming here specifically for a park, also helps us draw business to our local businesses so we can continue to support local versus our community leaving to go other places and spend their tax dollars, especially over the summer. So just from that point of view, I just wanted something to keep in mind. And obviously, I know that the Parks and Rec staff has taken a huge amount of consideration from the community, and that is what you are seeing today. So we thank you very much, Parks. We appreciate all the work because having an all-inclusive park was something that we had asked for. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Kat.
No more public comment.
All right, thank you. So I did want to touch a little bit on this, diving into this bit a little bit. I wanted to do clarify that a hundred and twenty four thousand dollar installation, I mean, it may sound like a lot, and I'm not saying it's not a lot. I think I've become pretty familiar with how much stuff costs with government, just because of all the liability and stuff. But I wanted to state that that actually includes the removal of the old, a removal of the entire play area, which is the old sand, all that stuff. Disposal. And then it's not just the new equipment, but there's a new 12 inch engineered fiber safety secure. So there's a whole new surface under all the playground equipment. So a friend of mine works for a company that does that stuff, and I know it's not cheap to do that surface area underneath. And, and then again, there's the inspection and compliance, which obviously probably is, may not be a big deal, but it is when you have children playing on something. Because what, what I would be nervous about a little bit is, I mean, could people, could our guys put this together? I mean, probably. I mean, you know, I could probably put it together. But if we had a child fall on it or something, and then we get an attorney for the plaintiff coming forward and saying that somebody who wasn't certified with the equipment put it together, and then we have a lawsuit at our hands, then we're not going to be real proud about that little bit of money we saved. So I think there, when it comes to government, we always have to think about that thing. And so sometimes for me, I have to switch off my private sector thought with how you have to think about things as a city. I can say that fixing up the old one, I know there was some issue with parts and there's some stuff missing. Do we, what is the, do we know how old that park is? Do you know how the existing playground is, Armando?
It, it has to be over 25 years old. I mean, but like Mr. Brosman said, it was, it's an older playground, which was built differently than they do things now. It reminds me of the Meadowview one that's been installed and it's really old and it's been there for over 22 years. Because when I lived in that neighborhood, that equipment was there. And that was 22 years ago.
Yeah. I, I just would like to finish up with, I mean, you know, dive into the numbers and look at, I, I just, I'm always shocked by what stuff costs nowadays. You know, I wonder why it costs a million dollars to put restrooms in somewhere. And when you look around, you realize that's what it cost. It's just, it's just crazy how the process that has to take place.
And just to point out, in the, the Lake Canyon Playground was 72,000 dollars to install the six features. And again, you're not putting in shade structures that require thicker footings. You know, because you have to have those rated for the wind, they're X, they're over eight feet tall, so they have to be engineered, they have.
And the same company did that one?
Which one? Lake Canyon, yes.
Yeah. So this is not, I mean, so this isn't an instance where we had somebody do something for like a hundred thousand, and then now we're having some other company do one. We're like, wow, why is this one 300? That just seems a little out of line. I mean, I would assume that the consistency of pricing, basically what you're getting, if it's someone from the same company, would be.
Well, and, and the timing, inflation.
Yeah. I mean, my issue would be, my issue would be very easy for us, honestly, just to say, you know what? Let's go out to bid for this one, you know, let's go out and, and see, you know, Harry, Harry mentioned there may be some other companies that could bid it cheaper. But then the problem I worry about that is if we did that, then we have a one off company doing this particular play structure. And then obviously, then we would assume that we probably shouldn't need to move forward and just bid every single park as we go. And then we end up with a hodgepodge, which is what was the big problem before we started replacing all these, is we had a hodgepodge of, of structures that were different makes, built of different types of materials and all that kinds of stuff, right? So, I don't know. I mean, look, we did a Parkmaster Plan, we, we did outreach to the public. I remember being at one of those meetings where shade structures over the playgrounds was a huge priority. And the ADA stuff, I remember the lady specifically talking about how she had, you know, she had an autistic child. And there was another person that had, I think, a wheelchair bound child, and they were like, we don't have any playground. And so, I mean, it's a big price tag, but it seems like it's, this is, you know, this is the community's money. This is money they voted for. This is money they're contributing. They want it to be used. So I don't know. That's just my thoughts. Council, anybody want to dive in on this topic?
Just one comment on the, on the purchasing. So cooperative bid doesn't mean we just go pick somebody and, and buy it. There's a lot more to it than that, even though it's not a three. You know, this is a company that's been vetted. It's a company that's been processed and, and there's a, there's a whole procedure to it. So cooperative bid doesn't, you know, I'm not going to spend 10 minutes here explaining cooperative bids, but I'm comfortable with it.
Not to beat a dead horse, but Mr. Reed brought up the master service agreement is what we call them at work, the state. We work with those a lot in, with the state, and sometimes they are a little bit more expensive, but they generally have much more bite if the contractor doesn't hold their feet to the, I mean, it holds their feet to the fire a lot more. So again, maybe your cost versus price, you know, long-term cost. But on a happier note, I agree with Ms. Seepold that this can be a draw. So my question is, can we have a ribbon cutting when this is done? Can we really, you know, build this up and let the really, so that the community members who ask for this really know it's there? And that we make this one of those jewels for the city. That was just one of the things. And hopefully, by doing that, there will be a lot more kids there that will hopefully screaming kids running around, playing, laughing will scare off those unintended that, you know, we don't, may not want there. So that was more of my comment. I really want the ribbon cutting, pomp and circumstance.
Is, this is specifically just for the one park, right?
Yes, we actually had a design before this, before we had the community meetings. Didn't have the shade structures, didn't have the ADA equipment. After having those, I, I met with our sales rep and asked her to redesign this to, to include those features. The ones that we originally had were probably about a hundred thousand dollars cheaper, but adding those features pushed up the cost.
Because I'm kind of going to echo what Bonnie said. I've worked for the state for a while. And I've been involved in using a lot of these types of contracts. And more than once have I found out that if we were to do it ourselves and not rely on the DGS contracts, that would actually be cheaper. But the points that the mayor makes are very good points. So I don't. So I don't entirely know how I feel about this one right now because I do want to save the city money. I don't entirely always trust the state negotiated contracts. But I do know that if we have five different contractors building five different parks, that that itself is going to be a nightmare to try to manage, repair, and do all those other things. So I haven't made my mind up yet.
Mr., Mr. Sles, could you clarify, what is the CMA, what is the insulation contract fee? What is that? Make that make sense to me. I don't know what that would be. It's the last line item.
$6,000?
Mm-hmm.
That's part of the, I'm sorry, I can't read that. Installation contract fee. That is part of the, I would have to pull up the contract to show you what it is. And I don't have the contract, the contract numbers in the staff report.
What, I mean, what, what would it, what would that be for, though? Like, $6,000 for what? Like, I mean, it says installation. That's not the installation. It's the, the installation is line items as above. Just curious what that is.
I can get back to you on that.
And the, the freight was mentioned.
We paid freight on the last five that were delivered here. It's just, it's a cost of doing business. They're not made locally. They're made and then shipped out to here and...
Twenty, twenty grand, though? Where's it coming from? It just seems high.
Not as high as you would think.
No?
I just, I just bought a bunch of racking to install at our warehouse, and to ship it from Lodi to Sacramento was like 12,000.
Oh, really? All right, okay.
Can I just, I, I do want to also mention, because it was mentioned by a speaker, maybe our engineers. Well, let me tell you a quick thing about our engineers. We don't, well, not ours. Engineers in general in public service are few in number. Right now, my office alone has engineers flying up and down the state because we cannot, we, there are not enough engineers in public service. And I know here locally with our city, they got a lot to do, the couple that we have. And I don't think I'd want to pull an engineer from Public Works to go and build a, a play structure. That's just not, that, and they have, that's not their, you know, their thing. So I don't think it's feasible. Personally, personally, I am in favor of this. I think it's, I mean, it might not, the numbers look high, but we are getting something that we've never had that apparently nowhere in our near area has. And it's, and yes, it's shiny and new. We all want shiny and new. I get that. That's something that maybe I'm drawn to a little bit. But I have been to that park. I've been to a lot of the parks. I lived across from a park and have seen the degradation of these facilities. There's a lot of little kids running around on these things. We have to remember, you can't judge it like a truck with mileage, but I bet, I bet we could. And I bet those slides outnumber mileage on almost probably any city vehicle. So, you know, I think they get their wear and tear, and they do have a lifespan. And I, I almost feel like we might be a little negligent the longer we leave these going without the proper parts, with just piecemealing them, with having fly-by-night companies coming in. If this is a company that is going to have their feet held to the fire, that, remember, if this falls through, it's not just Galt that comes after this company. We have the backing of the state because they have a DGS. They can be threatened. So I, I just feel like this, you know, I think we just need to move forward. That's, that's my opinion.
This company's been very incredible with the warranties, with parts that have been either vandalized or have broken on their own. We haven't had one issue with any part that we've tried to return under warranty. They haven't denied anything. And I'm not talking it's one or two pieces. It's been several pieces that have fallen off or been broken or been vandalized.
We have public comment, Tina?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Phyllis Johnson.
Thank you. As far as the parks getting new equipment and all, I agree with that. But there's two things. To keep it proper and in good shape, no offense to the homeless, we don't want them to have a camping ground or anybody else for that matter. They should be from, let's say, from the morning till late afternoon open. Gated, closed in the off-hours to keep it the way we want it produced. There has to be some kind of security in the off-hours to keep it up the way we want it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Well, without further public, if there's no further public comment, and we have no further discussion from council, I want to just again thank Mr. Brosman and Mr. Wenzel for their, their comments and concerns. They do weigh heavily on us. We wouldn't be talking about this at such length that they didn't, and you make all good points. And, and just one thing I would like to, Ms. Johnson, you are 100% correct. And believe me, the homeless issue at that park is a priority to us. And I believe, I, I mean, about a month ago, I spent a whole morning out there cleaning off some stuff that had happened myself with a, with a, with a Parks member, just so it got done. So believe me, I'm frustrated as you with that. And so I assure you that, that the city management and PD understand that and that we're working, do what we can. So with that said, if somebody could make a motion on something, anything at all, direction, what are we, where are we at? What would somebody like to do?
I have to read the whole thing. I move that we authorize, nope, wrong one. Ten, right. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount not to exceed $326,861 for replacement of the sports complex park playground structure.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve as presented by Councilwoman Rodriguez, seconded by Councilmember Pratton. Any alternate motion? If not, then roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. And Mr. Sles, if you could please get back to the council with, I think I know what that fee is now that we kind of looked at it ourselves, but if you could just clarify.
I've already reached out.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering our questions and concerns. All right, moving on off the consent calendar. Getting a slow start here, people, but it's important, it's important stuff. All right, item K, scheduled matters of notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
None.
All right, moving on to item L, regular calendar. City Council report, subject is the City Council Public Benefit Funding. Ms. Hubert?
So at the May 20th council meeting, Vice Mayor Sandu asked to bring back his public benefit funds, the remaining $1,000, to the Liberty Ranch Hawks Booster Club. And it will need to be approved by motion. And Mayor Sandu, Vice Mayor Sandu, do you have any comments?
I would like to ask my colleagues if they can support me on that. The reason, you know, in, in this city, a lot of nonprofit organizations. And sometimes we have to make a decision, and this is a public money, $1,000, because everybody know that, that club they need at this time. So that's why I decided, and I'd like to ask my colleague if they support me to give them $1,000 for support for funding. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, it's your discretionary money to use the communities you like. I think it's an excellent place to go with the funding, so I support it. You have a motion to approve? Do we want to make, we have a public comment on this? I'm sorry, do we?
No public comment.
Okay. All right.
I'll move to approve.
All right, moved by Councilman Rodriguez. Sorry, I'm just getting slow here. And I will second that motion. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Item's approved five to zero. Moving on to item two, Parks and Recreation Department. The subject is the City of Galt Special Sponsorship Application Review for fiscal year 2526. Mr. Sles?
Believe it or not, I thought this was going to be the hard staff report I was going to talk about today. But let's see here. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we'll be providing a short review of the presentation that was presented to you on May 20th. I'm not going to go over each line items, but if you have questions regarding the policies and the objectives of this sponsorship program, I'd be happy to. But that's what you see on screen now. What you see on this screen are the 12 applicants and the dates of their, their tentative dates of their event. I know this is a little small, but on this, you'll see the cost that they are asking for, that they went over with you in detail at the last meeting. And if you can't see one of those numbers, I actually blew this up, and I can tell you what the numbers are if you need to know. With that said, the recommendation is to review the special events sponsorship program request for fiscal year 2526 and provide direction on the approval of events, monetary amounts, and/or in-kind contributions. Should City Council approve all 12 events, total for this sponsorship program request is $37,220. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or actually get into detail of that presentation. But I didn't want to beat a dead horse as you guys went through this, this last council meeting.
I mean, I think we, go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
I, I just have one question because it looked like the Galt High Parade, did they expand it from the original ask? The map just looked different, so maybe I just recognized.
We had to go back to, so the City Council has three approved parade routes, one for Liberty Ranch, one for Galt High, and our downtown parade. So we informed them that they can't modify that parade route. They had to go down the parade route that was approved or come back and get permission to change it.
Okay, so the one that's in there now is the pre-approved.
Correct.
It was different than what they submitted, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I, I think we had a pretty thorough presentation last time. We had many of the people speak from the different organizations that are requesting this funding. I personally think that, you know, you're looking at about an average of $3,000 per event. If you spread it evenly across, I know that the numbers vary per event. But generally speaking, 3,000, some of these events are, are just phenomenal. Well, they're all, they're all, they're all important in their own way, and they're all very unique. It was a very eclectic mixture of things that are, that are being put on. But I just want to say thank you to all the people that are, you know, of the organizations and individuals that are putting on these communities. It has so much tremendous community value. I mean, I can't, we, we wouldn't have the small-town feel that we do have if we didn't have all these events. And a lot of these people work really hard to put these events on, and this, these, these numbers sometimes are just a dent in what it costs, especially with man-hours and stuff to put them on. A lot of this is still just very much volunteer. So whatever, however the city can help in, in, in a way that we do with these, every year, I'm always proud to, to help when we can. So that's all, my only comment on this. Does anybody else want to say anything? Anybody have any questions about any of them particular or just comments? Nope? You have a public comment on this item, Ms. Hubert?
No public comment.
Anybody, probably don't need to, but anybody here representing any of these events want to say something, they're welcome to. If not, we're just gonna, okay? All right, well, I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Reed. Can I have a roll call, please? Uh, you want me to read the, sorry. I make a motion to approve the events monetary amounts and/or in-kind contributions as presented. And seconded by Reed. So council, uh, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Approved five to zero. I just want to say one last comment, I'll save it for the end, so it's going to be said no matter what. But I do want to say that regarding the Veterans Gazebo, I just want to say thank you to the chamber, and the city has been very cooperative with helping with that. I know it's still a lot of hurdles to go through with the railroad and all that. But I am very happy to see for the first time, you know, outside of having like Veterans Field and some new stuff, but the progression that the city has done to honor our veterans with our parades, bringing in like the military tanks starting a few years ago, and then we've had the stuff at Veterans Field that Mr. Sles has been involved with doing. But the progression and culminating with the possibility of us doing a real tribute to the veterans, something that we don't have in Galt, which is kind of shameful that we don't have something more, you know, I'm, I'm happy to see that. And I, hopefully, it comes to fruition. So I just want to state that. So moving on, item M, communications. Do we have any communications?
Uh, none.
All right. City Clerks Report?
None.
Mr. Arias, comments by staff?
I think this is a first since I've been in the position, but there are no staff comments tonight.
All right. All right, moving on, last item P, comments by City Council members or future agenda items. Mr. Pratton?
I just wanted to report out that I did attend on the 29th, the Fairway Oaks Development meeting that we had. It was pretty good attendance. We were thinking about 40 people plus. I was a little embarrassed as a Galtonian as to the way the folks treated our staff. I mean, they were not nice. I understand they had their issues. They were not happy, but they were grumpier than me. So it was, it was not good. But I felt the staff handled it very well. They were very patient. And I, it, I stayed till the end to make sure, you know, I felt that the, the folks there got the answers that they were looking for. Not everybody was happy, you know? Some people commented they didn't want any development. Well, we're not going to make that person happy. I'm sorry. But, but I thought the information was good, and, and Amy put that information out there for the public. It's all available. And just wanted to thank everybody for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pratton. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you very quick. Thank you for the staff, for all the report. Thank you, all staff working really hard to make this city success. Thank you for the public comment. Thank you for the public came to this meeting. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Reed?
I don't have a lot. I just want, I know there was a resident that reached out to me earlier and asked me to look into an Assembly Bill 413. And so I reached out, and I'm working with the city manager to see how that affects the city and how the city has handled that. It's a new parking law that has to do with curbs and crosswalks and things. So I'm waiting to hear back from, from them. And I only gave it to them this morning, so they haven't had it for very long.
All right. Ms. Rodriguez?
Not much, but I too attended the Fairway Oaks meeting. And I do have to say, I agree with Mr. Pratton that it was very uncomfortable. People, I don't even think that the entire presentation was able to go forward. It was pretty hostile in there. It did calm down when, when there wasn't a presentation and we could actually talk to people. They, they did tend to calm down a little bit. And again, not completely happy, but I think they are coming to terms that, you know, things are going to move forward, but it's how to make it the least uncomfortable for them. But I do want to reiterate what Mr. Pratton said, that I was thoroughly impressed with staff. In fact, I had a community member say to me, I know why you took Amy to Washington DC. Because she very much held her own with all that happened, and Trung as well. Hadn't seen him in action ever before, I mean, other than presenting to us. But seeing him under fire, that was, you know, I was very impressed. And, and Mr. Arias as well, although I felt like he kind of jumped in there when I thought, oh, no. They're just going to get more angry. But he quietly backed off and let Amy and Trung handle it. So, but unfortunately, Galt does have some growing pains, and, but staff got through it. But I do want to thank the speakers, I know those who spoke tonight. I don't want you to think that it has fallen on deaf ears, at least for me, and I'm assuming everybody else. Finances weigh heavily on me. But I also see the other end where sometimes you do have to spend some money. so that you either don't get sued and lose more money, or it will bring in some unintended benefits, such as a, you know, maybe people from other communities come in to enjoy the new park or to enjoy the other aspects that we're bringing in. And so, but I do appreciate and very, very much value your opinions on this. So, I'd like that.
Thank you, Bonnie. Uh, I just want to say thank, thank you for the two of you for going to that meeting. I was out of state since I actually flew out on a plane Thursday evening, so I wasn't able to attend. I really planned on attending because I live in that area, and I have a lot of these people, um, you know, people that have been, reached out to me, have been concerned about that project and stuff, are my neighbors. And so I, this is an active conversation, and I very much wanted to be there. But I was a little disappointed when Mr. Arias stopped in my place of business this morning and came and gave me a, a debrief on how it went. And, you know, he said that they, you know, they were licking their wounds from it. Um, it's unfortunate because, you know, uh, this is a project that predates this council by years. Like, you, maybe, you know, probably, actually, probably even a couple decades